Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and welcome to the November 13 regular meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. I would say happy Veterans Day a couple of days late and thank all our veterans who have served our country. It's customary that we hold a moment of silence, so I would ask to please join the board as we take a couple of deep breaths and settle ourselves and center ourselves and prepare for the business ahead. Thank you. Now let us pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no special actions. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Anyone who would like to give public comment to issues not on the agenda, please come forward to the podium, state where you're from, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. The orange hat is back. And what you remember, I appeared last year and you guys did a great job of getting the plastic bag ordinance passed through very quickly, so I was impressed by your great speed and efficiency in doing that. And that leads me to the next thing, which is thank you for your public service. As always, we appreciate the time and effort that you put in to make our township a good place. Can you hear me?
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm Tom Kedwallader.
Okay, Tom.
And I am a resident at Friends Village. And I brought with me a fellow resident, Kip Cherry, who will be speaking briefly after me. So I'm here tonight to, and I think you've received letters from us, proposing that a ordinance be passed to make electric or battery-operated leaf blowers mandatory. And we've stated the reasons it would cut down on the exhaust to be safer for the workers. And the noise, the noise and the pollution of the exhaust are major, major concerns. And I think the lawn equipment industry is moving in that direction anyway. So it would be a timely thing to maybe give that a little friendly nudge and speed up that process so that the residents of Newtown Township can breathe easier and have less noise pollution. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kip Cherry, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I would note while you're changing places that we also, the board in their packet this evening, got an email, or it was actually from our assistant manager. So check your email for another email about this issue.
Good evening. My name is Kip Cherry. I am vice president of the Residents Association at Friends Village, and Tom is the president. And we've been cursed with a lot of leaf blowing activity at our campus, and it has really brought to our attention the fact that these leaf blowers that use gasoline engines are creating a lot of noxious fumes, a lot of noise, are very hard on the workers, and are actually more expensive to use than the electric battery-operated leaf blowers. And so we thought that it would be a good thing for our community to have an ordinance to guide people to transition from gasoline-operated leaf blowers to battery-operated leaf blowers. And we think that the landscape community also would be very favorable about this because it's very good for their workers. We also think that it would be very good for the Public Works Department here because it also is good for their workers. And we find that if people have a choice between using a gasoline-operated leaf blower or a battery-operated one, they love the battery-operated one, which is quiet and without any fumes. So we would like your consideration of doing an ordinance. I would like to read just the conclusion that we have in our own resolution, because we passed a resolution as an association. And so the conclusion was, now therefore, be resolved that in light of the above disadvantages of gasoline-operated leaf blowers, Friends Village Residents Association recognizes that the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers cause significant adverse environmental and health impacts, including toxic pollution and excessive noise, and strongly encourages the township of Newtown to require the phase-out of the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers within its municipal limits, including their operation, the operation by homeowners, the operation by commercial landscape firms, and also by the departments and agencies of the town as soon as possible. We are suggesting a two-year transition so that people who use gasoline-operated leaf blowers maybe get rid of the oldest one, the one that isn't working very well, and transition that way. So it's a slow process, it's not anything that has to happen overnight, but we think it would be tremendously in the interest of our community. We would also suggest setting up a, in the ordinance, a gold star system so that firms that use battery-operated leaf blowers could put a gold star after their name and get credit for doing that, and that would help people select them, it would help their branding. And I think that it would make a better world for all of us. We all know about greenhouse gas as well, and it would help to alleviate some of that issue. So all in all, it's just a real plus, I think, for our community if we go forward with this. We would be glad to assist in developing an ordinance, and so, you know, we are at your disposal. Thank you very much. Oh, and one more thing, Ginny Lee, a member of our group, did send in a letter, and it's in your comments email, so I presume you'll read that out loud. She couldn't be here, but she wanted to give her experience. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it, and I might add too that I'm a New Jersey person, moved to Pennsylvania, and I'm happy I did, and I've been enjoying living in Newtown and enjoying living at Friends Village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We did get that letter in our email just before the meeting, so.
You have to take kind of a wide turn here around the tables, excuse me.
Yep.
Good evening. I'm Terry Christensen. I live at 67 Kirkwood Drive. Not that it is relevant to this issue, but I'm the board chair emeritus of Friends Village. I want to speak in support of this proposed ordinance as a public safety issue. I'm visually impaired, there are a lot of us who are visually impaired, and the combination of quiet cars and noisy leaf blowers is particularly dangerous for us. It's not just, I mean, I travel with a guide dog, but people who travel with a white cane are even more affected. One of the things, a proficient cane traveler can listen carefully and hear the sound their cane tip makes on different surfaces. If you haven't done it for a while, if you haven't done it at all, you're not, that sounds foreign, I know, but it makes a huge difference. Leaf blowers essentially re-blind people, because you can't hear anything in the environment. And so I'm hopeful that we can be very proactive about this and make the pedestrian environment much more user-friendly than, especially for people like me who are visually impaired. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Spiewak, and I live over in Upper Mayfield in the enclave, which is at, it's below the intersection of Stoopville and Creamery and Linton Hill. I'm here tonight to talk about that light, the beacon, the blinking beacon that's yellow and red. On the Stoopville side, it's always yellow, on the two-side streets, it's always red. And people are very confused by this. It's a very confusing intersection, especially coming down from Eagle Road, where they've gone to another traffic stop there where it's all red, and then they come down to us, and it's yellow and red, and people don't understand that. They think that they're supposed to stop. People coming down think they're supposed to stop when they see that yellow light, they think it's going to turn to red, which it's not, and they stop, and we're sitting at the intersection waiting and trying to wave them on because we don't want anybody to get hit there. People have been hit, there's been several accidents while I've lived here. So this accident happened in February of 2018. This person who actually lives in our development was there for three months, and she was pulling out in the intersection. Some guy came down Stoopville Road, hit her going about 75 miles an hour, the police officer told her, and just totaled her car. This accident happened October 1st of this year. It was so terrible that this car was, I don't know if you can see it, I'll bring it up there if you can't. This car was actually on the pole when I first came out there. This car was just like hit, I mean, thank you. That man told me that he was hit, yeah, yeah. That man told me he was hit, he was coming out of our side of the street, which was Creamery. He was making a right, and a car just came flying up and swiped right into him. I don't know what happened to the woman that was in the car that's leaning up against that pole, but I hope she's okay, because that's one of our biggest fears, that someone is going to die at that intersection. The other problem is, as I said, people stop. They think they're supposed to stop and let the other person come out, and then the other cars come behind them, they're blowing their horns, they're doing all kinds of things. There are considerable near misses going on at that intersection, almost every day. I used to walk seven miles a day through Upper Mayfield and Newtown, and I can't tell you how many times I've seen a near miss at that intersection. The traffic light at, or it's not a traffic light, it's the four-way stop at Eagle Road has the four-way blinking with the big stop signs. We would be happy to have that, because we just need everybody to be able to do what they're supposed to do at that intersection. It's just so confusing, and we're a community of 55-plus, so we have people in there driving that are 99 years old, and it's very dangerous for them. And if you think about it, to have somebody 99 years old driving still, and their reflexes are not the same as they are when you're in your 40s and 50s and 60s even, it's just very poorly built there. And I have many neighbors who have come out tonight to support me with this, because, as I said, we all don't want anybody to die at that intersection. And I do have a quote from one of the police officers, who used to be the captain in this township, who said at the time, and I can give you the date and everything when he said it. On February 26, 2016, the chief of police of this township, Rick Pasquale, or Pasqualini, said, and I quote, "His biggest concern is the intersection of that Stoopville and Creamery-Linton Hill roads." So for him to say that, and it was in a newspaper article that I read, because I looked into this for now, I've been doing this since 2017, I've called our senators, I've called everybody. Perry Warren was out at my house a couple weeks ago, and we stood out there and we watched. There were so many near misses that they couldn't believe it. I mean, I've spoken with his office on the phone and told them about all this, and then I spoke at the Upper Mayfield Township meeting last month, and they said it's Newtown. So that's why I'm here tonight, to talk to you and see that, you know, that you know about this. I don't know how many people do know, but I know that the Upper Mayfield people are all aware of this. The other thing is that, as I said, there are near misses, and there was also a report done by a traffic study. Let me find that paper, and I will be one minute. And that traffic study was done many years ago, I don't know when the exact study was done, but it was a firm that was hired by Newtown, Upper Mayfield, Lower Mayfield, Newtown Borough, looking at the roads in the area for safety first. Many groups were part of the regional task force to go over the roads. One of the participants was Sue Herman from the Residents for Responsible Traffic Solutions, who called on the consultants to also take into account not only the accidents, but also the near misses that occur. This is what happens at this intersection, as we as residents travel this roadway every day. Some of our neighbors have even not gone straight anymore because they're afraid to cross the road. And I used to be in a smaller car that was lower to the ground, I had to get a new car because I couldn't see. It's so difficult, because when you come down both sides, when you're looking on both sides, especially from Linton Hill Road to head on to Stoopville to go across, there's a curve on each side. So when the cars are coming, and they're coming pretty fast, you know, you can't see them until they're almost on you. Like if you're coming down Stoopville, you don't see a car coming across until you're almost upon it, the way the road is configured. So I'm hoping that you guys can figure out a way that we can get this straightened out, because for us, it could be a matter of life and death for any of us, anytime, day or night, doesn't matter. So I thank you for your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your, thank you for your excellent presentation. I would like to think that we could get together with Upper Mayfield and approach PennDOT to do something and support whatever can be done for you. But I did write down, you'd like it to be like the Eagle Road intersection.
Yes, and then the other thing is also that toll has $100,000 in the escrow account for a light for that intersection.
Okay.
So just, yeah, and it's still there, especially Dave Knoll, and he said they still have it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk and Newtown. As you all know, and many people in the audience know, two years ago, the Board of Supervisors judiciously approved crosswalk upgrades at Tara Newtown Yardley Road and Sycamore and Silo. An update, over a month ago, the Board of Supervisors approved the contractor for this project, and the people of Newtown, including those who aren't on email lists, constantly approach us and ask, is anything going on? What is the timeline for construction of the upgraded Tara Newtown Yardley crosswalk? The second item I wanted to address is, 21 days ago, the Board of Supervisors approved the contractor for the Newtown Business Commons sidewalk project. And the concerned citizens for pedestrians, wheelchairs, and bicycles had proposed improvements to the sidewalk at that crosswalk of Tara Drive and Newtown Yardley Road, where a permanent sidewalk doesn't exist, nor does curbing to protect motor vehicles from hitting pedestrians, wheelchairs, and bicycles on the sidewalk on the south side, which is the cemetery side of Newtown Yardley Road. And it is also part of the Newtown Trail. We all know that Newtown has become a destination and is more of a walking town now than it ever has been. So at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, because these improvements were not in the budget for the upgrades for the crosswalks, it was advised that we find another way to present and get the improvements approved. And we were made aware of the Newtown Business Commons sidewalk project, which 21 days ago the contractor was approved for. And what Newtown constituents, some board members included, asked is that the Board of Supervisors asked the township engineer, township manager, to communicate with PennDOT about an amendment, an adjustment to the $873,000 that was given to Newtown, but $384,120 of it wouldn't be used in the bid award to the contractor for the existing scope of the project. So what we basically asked was, can we get a quote from the contractor that just got the award to see what the added improvements to that sidewalk would be? Because it's connected to the specific locations outlined in the multimodal grant. Excuse me. So in the meantime, constituents for pedestrian safety, wheelchair, and bicycle safety, we made a video which was distributed to a number of people, including the board, township supervisor, township manager, and township engineer. So we've begun to justify this, and what we'd like tonight is an update from the Board of Supervisors on that request of the township engineer to get a quote from the contractor for the additional improvements, and communicate with PennDOT to get their pre-approval for such a change, an amendment to the grant, or an adjustment to the use of the funds. And what I have to provide to the board and to the township manager are exhibits B and C of the actual grant agreement that Newtown received the $873,000 for. So we look forward to an update on the timeline for the crosswalk and on the progress to get the funding for the sidewalk improvements and curbing. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. I believe our engineer will have that in his monthly report that he has.
Oh, okay, I did not see it on the agenda.
Right. It'll be part of his, it'll be part of his monthly report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Let me go back to my agenda. Thank you, everyone, for coming. That brings us to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. We regularly have a, we regularly have a planning commission report, but they did not meet this week. I am going to defer to, before Mr. Kedwallader and Kip, I'd like to defer my report for a second, and Mr. Mack had a question for you.
Can I?
Okay, and Ellen has a statement.
Can I say?
Sure. Difference too.
Our friends at Friends Village, I would like to tell you that our EAC, our Environmental Advisory Committee, is working on this issue. We agree with you 100%, and we are going to try to advise the rest of the Board of Supervisors that we agree with that, and we'll see what can be done.
Mr. Mack has a question, and I have one tiny little question.
You know, you mentioned the anti-plastic ordinance, and I know the EAC did a lot of work with looking at what other municipalities might have done in that regard and usually copied from that. Do you know any other municipalities nearby that have such an ordinance?
I believe Princeton has one.
Yes. Princeton, New Jersey? Come on.
New Jersey, that's where I'm from.
That's where she's from.
Consider a reverse invasion.
All right, well, if we could see something like that, I'd send it to the Environmental Advisory Council.
We'll check into that for you.
Lower Mayfield, there's so many that are about to come out, all around us.
Okay.
And you know more than I do, thank you.
And my quick question is, the letter that you sent us a few weeks ago?
Yes.
Did that have the sample ordinance in with it? I forget.
I'm sorry?
Did it have the ordinance in with it?
No, it did not. I don't believe.
Either way, we're going to get it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
We have it from the EAC.
Under my report for board members, I want to thank everybody for voting last week. But I also want to recognize Newtown Township Police and others, or maybe Emergency Services, for helping with the plan, the planning for all our visits from all the dignitaries that were visiting Newtown during the election time. So I know that takes a lot of effort, a lot of planning, and judging from what happens in Butler, a lot of planning. So just to thank you there. Meetings I attended in the last couple of weeks was an NFA meeting, Newtown Fire Association meeting, where Ms. Snyder and I did a little skit to announce the signing of the fire trucks. And then just yesterday, I visited the Sauer Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority, otherwise known as the Sauer Authority, for their meeting to help reschedule a meeting, a presentation for the board. So that'll be coming up in the next couple of weeks, probably rescheduled. Madam Vice Chairman, anything?
I think you pretty much said it all. Thank you to the police, and we had no EAC meeting this month because of Veterans Day. And thank you for coming to the Sauer Authority, because it was a really great meeting for you to be at. I'll have more on that later.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary-Treasurer?
I did nothing, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Calabro?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Davis?
I have to report other.
Okay. Give me a chance to get some water here. We have no public hearings, we have no land development. That brings us to reports of officials, and that starts off with our engineer's report. Mr. Candari.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just some updates. I can answer some of the questions that were asked during the public comment, give some updates on a few of the projects. Last week, we had the pre-construction meeting for the Newtown Pedestrian Upgrades Project. We met with the contractor, and at this time, they are starting to prepare submittals and construction schedules that they will provide to us. As soon as we receive them, we will share them with the township. The notice to proceed has not been issued, that'll be based off the schedule, material deliveries, once we receive that information from the contractor. But we did have that pre-construction meeting last week, and I thought it went well. The Business Commons Sidewalk Project, after last meeting, and with direction from the township, we did look into some of those questions regarding the grants. We prepared a cost estimate as well for that additional work along Newtown Yardley Road. We did share that with the township as well. The Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant was open to the idea of expanding the scope of the project, whereas the LSA grant was not. whereas the LSA grant was not. So this is all information we shared with the township, along with that cost estimate that I did prepare for the additional work.
Funny, Mary? You mentioned the LSA grant. Under the assumption that the total grant we got was $873,000 from the Multimodal Fund, is that Transportation Fund, is that correct?
That's correct.
So why you, what's with the LSA? I don't, I don't get it. Why are you mentioning that?
That's another grant the township received for this project that is specifically for storm drainage that's required for the sidewalk installation.
And how much was that grant for?
I don't have that contract in front of me.
We do get it.
I can look and, I can find that contract and get that information. But, like I said, that, that grant is specific for storm drainage, the infiltration trenches for the sidewalks.
Oh, the famous infiltration ditches? Like the Darlington ditch that is still there and doesn't seem to work? But in any case, I didn't realize that. But three, 876,000? How much was that for the multimodal?
873,000.
And the grant from the bid was more like 488,000, right?
That's correct.
So the multimodal grant covers, covers most of this. I don't know about the ditches. Infiltration ditches is part of the bid that went out?
Yes.
And you're saying that the transportation grant cannot cover this infiltration ditches of 56,000, whatever it is, on the NS, NJS bid? Was 56,000 for infiltration ditches?
Right. I believe that grant could be used towards that if, if...
The multimod, multi, the M, whatever it is.
MTF grant.
MTF grant. It could be used for that. Then, you said that the LSA grant was used for infiltration trenches.
The grant, when it was prepared for the LSA grant funds, was specifically for the storm drainage needed to install the sidewalks.
But you mentioned, you just mentioned infiltration trenches.
That's the storm drainage.
Yeah. So the NJS already has that in their proposal for 56,320?
Right.
And, but you don't know how much the LSA grant was for?
I, I don't have the, the LSA grant contract in front of me. No.
Why don't you two work this out via email? Because it's...
Well, I tried working it out by email, but I'm getting confused. The other point I wanted to make was I'm looking at the winning bid from NJS.
Yes.
And your bid, first of all, it was RV8, RVE, RVE's estimate. And I heard Mr. Fure mention that we thought you would be going back to NJS for their idea of how much this might cost. But you, RVE came up with their own estimate. The problem is, I'm looking at the concrete sidewalk and concrete curb. And it says in your estimate, you're saying the unit price for a concrete sidewalk, for example, is $200. Whereas the NJS winning bid, they said $90. Now, if I take that into consideration with the concrete curb, which is, you said was 120 unit, cost, NJS has $90. So those two things, if I subtract, you know, use, use their unit cost, that's a savings of $129,000. It changes your bid, basically.
Can, you're confusing me now, John.
I'm saying that RVE created a bid estimate that is more, $129,000, maybe more than it should be, compared to what NJS might have bid on the budget.
But doesn't the contract, isn't the contractor bound to accept what their, their, their bid was?
Just, I guess, so we're clear, the, if, if we move forward with the sidewalk on Newtown Yardley Road, that would have to be rebid again.
All right, let's hold that off for a second.
And I, and I can, you know, I'll just point out too, I have the bid submissions for this project. You're right, you know, NJS is the low bidder for a reason. They did bid $90, but the second lowest bidder was $170. So we go off of information that we receive off of current bids for other projects. And, you know, that's, that's the best information we can use. Could they come in lower? I suppose so. But, you know, when we prepare a cost estimate, we want to be as accurate as possible.
Well, I don't know if it's as accurate as possible, but, you know, that's open to consideration.
John, why don't you get to your point? Please.
The point is, the major supplier of funds for this is PennDOT through the MTF grant. And they said, you know, they're considering if we made a case for it, changing the scope.
I think that's what Mr. Kandari said earlier.
Yes.
It's not out of the question. It's not a guarantee, but it's, it's not out of the question.
Okay, it's not out of the question. So it is possible, leaving aside the stormage drain issue, because you can't tell me how much that is. It's not out of the question that we can actually say, for example, your estimate was from Terry Drive to Elm Avenue.
South Elm Street, correct.
If we were to change that, say, from the crosswalk to South Elm Avenue, you could knock a third of the price off at least because of the distances involved. Because that's the part of the, of Newtown Trail. You realize that, don't you? Where you come in to the crosswalk, down from Lower Darlington Road, where you're adding some sidewalk way up at the top of Lower Darlington Road, that comes all the way down, past their neighborhood, goes around Rick Steel's, goes, goes to that crosswalk, and then goes into the borough. So that little stretch there is very important. And I think we can make a case with PennDOT. Let me finish.
I don't see anybody disagreeing with you, John.
Well, what's the next step?
The next step would be to authorize the engineer to gather some more information, find out what forms need to be submitted to do the adjustment in the amendment?
Well, who makes the case before PennDOT? We have to come up, we have to make a case. I'm not trusting RVE to make a strong enough case for this project. I mean, I'm not willing to leave it up to the engineers to make a case for how to make Newtown better. It's up to the supervisors, and I think we need some kind of input into that process.
I can tell you that I do trust them. So I don't know. We want to do a poll of the board?
Well, you know, I'm not quite sure. No, I've never done this before. But so, PennDOT is asking for if we can make a case for it. I've had three points that I made, I sent you by email, I believe, my three points to make a case for this?
Yes.
Would you present that to PennDOT?
I, yeah, if, with direction from the township, we, we could use that when we submit. And I just, again, it's...
Could certainly be part of your submission.
So everybody has seen those three points that I made, at least?
When did you send it?
This afternoon.
I got it.
And if you have other points, other case that you can make a case for, I think we should submit it to RVE if they're gonna go before PennDOT to present a case for why we want to expand the scope and if they would approve that. Dealing with the infiltration problem? I don't know. You know, there's nothing, there's no infiltration system over there right now.
Well, why don't you get that information, too?
Are you asking why we're installing the infiltration trenches?
No. I mean, you had, this is part of the scope of where the commons is. I'm not sure about, there's no infiltration system where the Newtown Yardley Road is, I don't believe. Is there?
No. So proposing sidewalk and curb in that location does require storm drainage.
Okay.
So that, that is part of our cost estimate. But I, I think that answers your, your question.
But you didn't, you didn't answer my question about how much money is involved in the storm drainage. We need to find the money for this. That's the, one of the most important questions. Do we have the money?
Okay.
If you haven't added that to your questions, please do. And I will review and ask any questions that I have. Mr. Kandari, do you have some other business?
Yes. Two other items on the agenda are all related to the 2024 Newtown Township Liquid Fuels Road Program. Both are for the project closeout. The first item is change order number two. This change order reflects adjustments to the scope of work and adjustments to existing contract items to equal final field quantities. The changes being made reflect the reduction in the contract of $87,707.77 to the contract items. Upon approval of this change order, the revised contract value will be $656,779.28.
So if there was a motion, what would it be to?
To approve change order number two in the amount of a net reduction of $87,707.77.
Do we have, okay, do we have a second? A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board on this? Any from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the change order number two for the Township Liquid Fuels Program, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Next would be payment certificate number two. This is the final payment certificate for this project. At this time, the contractor, James D. Morrissey, has completed the project, and the work has been deemed acceptable. As required, the contractor has furnished a maintenance bond of 100% of the final contract value. That bond is set to expire on August 30th, 2026. So with that, RVE recommends payment to the contractor in the amount of $404,520.57. This shall be the final payment made to the contractor for this project.
A motion, do we have a second? Second. A motion and a second. Do we have any more coming from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying, payment certificate number two for the Newtown Township Liquid Fuels Program, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. That's, that's all I had on my head.
Thank you for your report. Okay, that brings us to Mr. Sanders, Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item in our report this evening is the board's consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for fire services between the township and Newtown Borough. This was negotiated. Terms were provided to us, and we crafted an agreement between the township and the Borough that covers 2025, similar to the one we did for 2024. And because it's an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, it requires a resolution to approve it. And if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for fire services with Newtown Borough for 2025.
Do we have a motion?
I would make that motion.
Do we have a second? I'll make the second. So a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving this resolution for an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Newtown Borough for fire services, fire protection services? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
That concludes our report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So the, we don't need to do a separate resolution for me to sign?
No, that resolution authorizes that.
Okay. Great. That brings us to Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance this evening is $6,944,115. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Hearn to give his monthly police report. Evening, Chief.
Evening, sir. Good evening, board members. October police report for 2024. We documented 2,527 calls for service, logged just over 21,000 patrol miles on our fleet. October was a busy month. We had 31 arrests or clearances, four for simple assault, nine for theft, one for warrant, eight narcotics, two forgeries, one check fraud, one for threats, and five DUIs. Investigations were also very busy the month of October with 26 new cases signed to our investigations unit with nine crime scenes processed, some of which included a burglary, theft, frauds, two sexual assaults, narcotics arrest with possession with intent to deliver, with 600 bags of heroin and cash seized, one child abuse, couple assaults, and terroristic threats. There were five, three thefts, three death, I'm sorry, and five child lines. There were traffic crashes for the month of October with 145 citations issued and 220 warnings issued. We, truck enforcement did four task force assignments resulting in 26 truck inspections, 11 citations, 13 warnings. Three vehicles and two drivers were placed out of service, and two vehicles were towed. Notable jobs for the month of October. As you know, October through November 5th, Newtown Township Police Department participated in numerous dignitary protection details in the region with the U.S. Secret Service. It all went successful. Public service announcements. National drug takeback was held on 10/26. We collected 110 pounds of unwanted prescription medications. Just a reminder to the public, our drop box is open Monday to Friday, 9 to 5. They can drop off their unwanted prescription meds in our lobby. Fraud on the elderly are continuing. Please pay attention to your parents, your grandparents, and your elderly neighbors. Any phone solicitations and continued efforts to get their personal information should be reviewed. Holidays approaching, also package and mail thefts will be increasing. So make sure, use a post office box inside the postal facility and pick up your packages on your doorstep as soon as they're dropped off or have a neighbor do it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do have two. Just this afternoon, phone rang. It was somebody who wanted to talk to my wife about a suspicious package that was, some illegal package that was delivered to our house. There was no illegal package that was delivered to our house. I, I advised her to tell, tell the caller that I would be seeing the chief of police this evening, and I would discuss it with him. Promptly hung up. But is, is that a common, is that a common fraud?
Well, if they try to, if they try to engage you and get your personal information, that's what they're attempting to do. I would not talk to anybody, you do not call directly yourself. Anybody trying to solicit your personal information, your address, your name, your date of birth, credit card numbers, do not get that information out over the phone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the other comment I just wanted to make is beware of deer. They're everywhere. Just a couple of weeks ago on Sycamore Street, on a Friday morning, there was a deer, a deer hit in front of me.
We had 27 deer collisions this past month of October. I actually utilized the county sign board down on Swamp Road by the bypass to advise residents about slowing down. It's the only sign I have. So please pay attention to deer for the next couple of months until they're gonna be out there.
This is their running time.
I have a question for the chief. Chief, are you aware of the light that these, the people from Upper Makefield were talking about at Linton Hill and Subville Road?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you see a number of accidents happening there?
There were some collisions out there, not dramatic. There were some collisions out there, not a dramatic high number, but there is a hazard crossing over from, uh, Linton Hill side to the Cremery side in Upper Makefield Township. Um, most of the development is on Upper Makefield Township. Um, we do respond to crashes because that is our intersection. Um, but, uh, there are collisions out there. There's a flashing light for red north and southbound, and east and west on Stuteville, it's yellow flashing. Um, the age of the drivers come into play, the ability of the drivers come into play. If you want to spend the money, put a traffic light there, best I can tell you. It is, it is a, uh, it's a bend. If you're traveling eastbound on Stuteville Road, it does bend to the right, so visibility is limited when you're trying to pull out there.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Any other for the police? Uh, thank you, chief. I know I sent you some questions regarding signage, since you mentioned signage from you had to borrow. We have no signage. Uh, there are different kinds of signage, and I believe you had requested, uh, for example, a couple of, uh, uh, signs that will, with a trailer that tell you how fast you're going, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And then you requested one that's just a message sign, which is, you just mentioned somewhere out on the bypass, you put a sign that you borrowed. But, uh, I, as, as I understand it from the manager, none of that is in the, uh, budget at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir, at this time.
And I know we used to have, uh, at least, uh, these, uh, solar powered signs maybe that go on poles?
They were battery operated. Um, they're both, uh, they don't hold a charge. They're probably ten to twelve years old at this point. They no longer hold a charge to last any length of time. Uh, they're, them themselves are probably about eleven thousand dollars apiece right now. They're battery operated and solar powered are an option today's, in today's, uh, technology. And the other sign that, the trailer sign board with the speed, um, that I proposed for our budget, um, the pricing was a little off. It's actually nineteen thousand dollars for that unit, but it would include a sign and an actual speed alert when you're traveling in excess of speed.
Right, because, uh, as you know, we had, as you may know, we had a resident come in complaining about speeding on, uh, Upper Silver Lake Road, but I also had complaints from residents of, uh, Woods of Saxony and from my neighborhood, Country Bend, where people are speeding, going, uh, through the neighborhood, using it as a cut-through. I'm sure you're aware of that, and especially, uh, Davis Lane in Country Bend is a very narrow road. There's also, uh, a pedestrian path that people use to go across that road, and there are children I know living. One of the, uh, players from the Little League team, his family is there. They play out in the street all the time. And there's actually some kind of ADA ramps that were recently installed on Davis Lane so that people can go across, but there's no pedestrian marking, there's no, there's no crosswalk marking, there's no sign that says beware pedestrians, anything like that. And I would think in that situation, Davis Lane is a perfect place for one of these signs that are telling people how fast they're going, especially when they hit that, uh, open part that's a little wider, where the kids are playing, where people are going across the street there. Uh, so I would be in favor of putting at least one of these into the, into the budget, so.
That's, that's your board, your prerogative as well as the board members'. I'm, I'm all in favor of it, if you want to modify the budget.
Well, I just, uh, wanted to get, make sure that we don't have anything like that.
We, we have two, uh, old signs now that are probably twelve years old. They run off of batteries, they have to be charged up. They go out there, they're placed on, uh, stationary poles, usually township speed signs, that type of stuff, and they work for a few hours and then they, then they die out.
Because, uh, you know, some residents are taking things into their own hands. I heard of one resident in Woods of Saxony putting, uh, orange cones in the street. And, you know, he was told, well, you're not really, you shouldn't really do that, but, uh, the people are getting a little desperate about the speeding in the neighborhoods. And I know, I did analysis of the speeding citations that the, uh, police department has done, and I know that the people from, uh, Newtown Walk are very appreciative of the, uh, monitoring that's being done on, uh, Newtown Yardley Road. A lot of tickets were issued, a lot of citations were issued there. So, but I know is a problem for the police to be situated inside a road like Davis Lane and try to catch people speeding. It doesn't, it's not gonna work because you don't have radar, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
And, uh, so I think these signs could, uh, really help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your support.
Any other? Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, chief. That's all we have under our report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, it's time for amendments, bills, lists, and reports. Mr.?
Okay.
All right, so I move to approve the minutes of the October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Board Supervisors Meeting. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, multiple seconds. Uh, any con- any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the October twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, board meeting, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, uh, next is approval of the, uh, bills totaling a whopping one million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents. And I know, I guess I know why that is, is, uh, payment for the roads, payment for a dump truck, payment for the LED lights, is that correct? That's all bumped it up there. So I make that motion. Insurance is. Uh, a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those who pay, in favor of paying our bills for November tw- uh, on the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four bills list, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four one. Uh, finally, I make a motion to approve the total funds transfer according to the, uh, bills list of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Second. Motion and a second, whichever way. And any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying our interfund transfers as, uh, listed on the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four bills list, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Brings us to our second round of public comments. Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk in Newtown. Uh, thank you for the, uh, analysis and discussion regarding, uh, the improvements on Newtown Yardley Road to the sidewalk and curbing as part of the Newtown Business Commons Project. And the exhibits that I gave, um, to Mr. Lewis that are from the multimodal agreement, I, I looked at them after listening to the discussion. And to address Mr. Kandari's point about rebidding and using, uh, average pricing, I, I think this is salient. Um, under the sample letter of adjustment, it reads, "Per the terms and, uh, of the subject agreement, this letter of adjustment will notify you that the sponsor will redistribute the costs in the current estimated project cost exhibit with no change in the total project costs by increasing, decreasing the costs of the phases within the project as shown below and further detailed in attached exhibits." That's for an adjustment. Under an amendment to the grant, since the date of the original agreement, some standard provisions and accompanying exhibits have been updated. For the term, the terms of the subject agreement, copies of the updated exhibits are attached. Here too and hereby supersede and replace the corresponding exhibits attached to the original agreement. We are requesting your concurrence as to the amendment of the above referenced agreement with updated exhibits. If you agree to the amendment, please indicate below by signing and noting your title where indicated. Please attach a resolution verifying your authorization to sign this letter of amendment. In our, listening to this and analysis, this explains that the scope has changed and that the cost for it will remain within the cost of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. I also believe it justifies asking the awarded contractor if they would agree to the amendment, an additional part of the project at the rates they were awarded under the bid award. That way, it doesn't need to be rebid because it's still part of the same project. It's new exhibits and scope. It's under the total cost of the grant. And not having seen the estimate, I believe it's important that, given Pendot has agreed that with justification, they'll agree to the amendment, thank you. It's all entirely possible. And because there are costs from the estimate from RVE that can be eliminated from their estimate by the actual contractor at the rates they're awarded, I believe it'll come in under the eight hundred and seventy-three thousand for the total stretch between Terry and Elm. We also asked the contractor to give us the cost quote for the crosswalk to Elm so that we don't in the, our amendment exceed the grant eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. I believe Pendot, in my speaking to them, agreed to pedestrian wheelchair and bicycle safety projects, and I'm glad to hear they've already agreed to an amendment to this grant. So what Newtown is asking is that those specific things be asked of Pendot and of the contractor for specific costs because I imagine in the RVE estimate, there were repetitive costs because as Mr. Kandari indicated, rebidding, uh, we remember there were costs in the bid that were replicated for Sycamore Silo and Tara, such as mobilization costs. So if those were part of the estimate that can be pulled out because it's the same contractor doing the same project right in the Business Commons adjunct and part of Terry Drive, those costs can be eliminated from RVE's estimate, and the actual costs, I believe, will come in lower than the eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. And I really appreciate your consideration for this because it's an absolutely essential addition. That sidewalk meets the road, as you saw in the video. I'm not gonna ask how many of you watched the video, but I strongly suggest that you do so. Thanks. Thank you. And we, we have watched the video.
Uh, good evening. I'm Al DuFault from Newtown Walk. Uh, to answer, I think, one of the board's questions here is what do we do going forward? I would say we've got a project here that's somewhat scalable. Um, you know, the, 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 right now, it sounds like the preliminary estimate from the engineer was from Elm Street to Terry Boulevard. So that's eighteen hundred linear feet, roughly. Um, I think this is somewhat of a scalable job i- if you've got a budget of three seventy-something. Uh, while we couldn't take that eighteen hundred linear feet and scale it down to something more practical or affordable, which might be a thousand feet to the driveway at, uh, the commons, or six hundred feet to the crosswalk. So I think, looking at that, those numbers, we ought to be able to scale this estimate down somewhere, I'm sure, in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, uh, I would further suggest that, um, that could further be reduced, depending on where you draw the line, as to where that drainage is located. If that drainage is somewhere around fifty thousand dollars, maybe it doesn't even enter into the, into the smaller project. So again, we might afford some savings along those lines. And as an engineer myself, I will tell you that the cost of sidewalks is usually around ten bucks a square foot or ninety dollars a square yard. It'll, it'll, it'll range from seven to twelve bucks a square foot. So I think the, uh, the contractor's estimate is probably, uh, around ninety dollars, I think I heard, so that, that sounds more reasonable. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Good evening. Valerie Mahalik from Newtown Walk. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Chief Hearn and his officers for, um, making it a real point to be at the crosswalk area, um, and, and monitor the, the constant speeding that, uh, takes place there. Um, I also want to add to what both Al and Charlie are proposing. One of the newest problems that we have is when cars are trying to stop at the crosswalk, cars from behind are going around them. Now, if you're heading into the borough, there's a turning lane there so the cars can go into the turning lane. My daughter and I were in the crosswalk, and she stepped out actually in front of me, and the car had stopped, but as she was stepping out, a car came into the turning lane and almost hit her. On the opposite side, people go around as well because, as Charlie and Al have said, there is no curb. So they go right up on the grass on the sidewalk, which is flush with the road. So even once we put the rapid blinking flashing light in and people are stopping, you're going to have the line of sight issue from the cars coming from both directions, and if there's no curb or sidewalk there, they're gonna go, you know, into whoever is walking over there. So it, it is a real serious, um, problem that it's flush with the road, not to mention when it's dark because there's no lighting over there. Um, it's very dangerous. I know on Halloween night, we were, many of us were walking into the borough, and there were some real, uh, problems there. And just as one last thing, there's an article here about a grant with the borough, uh, creating pedestrian safety. Um, so I'm going to just give this to you to look at again so that we put pedestrian safety first. And thank you to all that have been helping us, especially John Mack.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we can move on. Thank you for your public comment. Bring us to old business. And we are slated to have a budget discussion. I would just note again that, uh, the manager's budget as, as, uh, before us has no tax increase. The general fund, the ending general fund balance is not only positive, but it's by a percentage that is over what our policy, uh, suggests. Our policy suggests ten, at least a ten percent, uh, ending fund balance. Ten percent, ten percent of expenditures, total expenditures, I believe. It, it actually has, the, the manager's budget actually has a fifteen, almost sixteen percent, um, ratio there. So it's beyond
So beyond that, there's a one-time transfer to the fire protection fund of one point two million. There is one hun- hundred thousand more for road paving. There's six hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars for capital improvement in all depart, all departments. There are no layoffs and there are no reduction in services. Just a couple other points. Newtown Township, our millage rate remains lower than two-thirds of the municipalities in Bucks County, although that's kind of a dynamic thing as, as everyone approves their budgets. We've pretty consistently stayed in the, at the top of the bottom third. Budget also can say, can, contains salary adjustments for key management positions to consider, which considers the hierarchy of command and bench, and it also benchmarks our positions compared to other municipalities in Bucks County. The last time adjustments were made due to benchmarking was in 2021 by E- consult solutions. So any other comments from the board?
I'm again going to say that I believe a two mil tax increase is needed this year for fire services, for additional firefighters. I don't, I know that Mr. Calabro said that taking that money from the general fund and putting it over there this year could be a Band-Aid, but that's all it would be is a Band-Aid, which would leave us next year having to have a much bigger tax increase that I really, I don't want to do that to our taxpayers. So as everybody knows, I'm very interested in protecting our emergency services and enhancing them in whatever way we can. And obviously, the fire department is the one place that I believe is neglected. And I think we have to get up to speed and raise our standards so that we have paid firefighters on the weekends as well as during the week. It only makes sense to do so and anything else would be fooling ourselves. So I think everybody knows that that is what I was going to say and I, after thinking about it for the last couple of weeks, I, I'm not going to change that. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I have some questions. I've been trying to figure out this format of the document is really, makes it very, very difficult to compare it to previous budgets, especially when it comes to salaries. And I know that what has been combined, for example, I can't find the salary, for example, of the fire chief. Can, can you tell me what the fire chief's salary is?
Be one forty next year.
Okay.
You can also email me and ask me the questions and I can send you them.
Well, I've asked these questions before.
You haven't asked for the specific salaries. Do you want me to send those to you?
Well, I think it should be, my point is, I think these salaries should be in the budget.
They are in there.
Where is it in the budget?
In the fire fund.
What page is that, please?
Starts with zero three. B fifteen.
Page what?
B fifteen.
It's going to take me a while to get there. B sixteen?
Yep.
I would just mention that I asked for these, this information and Mr. Lewis was, had them back, had them in my email box, inbox the next morning.
It's not a matter of me having the information. It's a matter of the residents of Newtown having this information. Is what the point of a budget really is, I think, in a lot of cases.
The total salary for the fire chief and the assistant fire chief combined is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, so the fire chief is one hundred and forty. And who is making up the remaining one hundred?
Assistant fire chief.
The fire chief is one forty.
That's correct. There's an assistant fire chief that would make one twenty-seven five.
Assistant fire chief. Okay.
We approved that position a couple of years ago.
And someday, we're going to be able to fix the feedback from this microphone, I guess. But regarding your salary, you mentioned was a hundred and fifty?
A hundred and eighty.
Yours is a hundred and eighty.
That's what's proposed for 2025.
Right. And for Catherine, it's?
One thirty.
And that makes up the three hundred and ten.
Olivia's included in that figure as well.
Included in what figure? One thirty and one eighty is three ten.
Yeah, that's correct.
So Olivia, wouldn't it be in there then?
So it's, it's right underneath it.
Okay. I guess the same thing goes for the police department. I don't know what the chief is making versus the assistant chief.
The chief would make one seventy-eight next year.
There you go.
The captain would make one six, one sixty-five, I believe, and the? One fifty-six. And the deputy, the lieutenant would make one thirty.
Okay.
One forty.
My point in bringing this up is that previous budgets, these were all listed in the budget separately. Why aren't they listed that way in the budget?
They, they were listed for the board's reference separately. They were not included in the final budgets. Schedule C was removed.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we will be voting on these again by resolution.
Right, they're all included in the resolution for the year end.
The other thing is, I mentioned to the chief was about the signage. And I would like to, I don't know how you do this, but make a motion that we have a line item in the budget for at least one of these signs that tell you how fast you're going with the trailer. I believe the chief mentioned, how much was that? Nineteen thousand for that? For just one sign, it's nineteen thousand? One signage plus the trailer?
Would that be like the, like the signage and trailer that's out on Swamp Road now?
No, it tells you what speed you're going. It's not just, it's not just a message board.
Okay.
It has radar in it and that's to help people slow down. And the total was nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. I'd like to include a line item in the budget for that if the board is of a mind to do that.
I, I have no trouble with that. Consent, consensus of other board members? No, wait, let me make it clear. We can't, we can't vote on a budget this evening.
No, you can't adopt the budget this evening.
We can give you directions.
You can, you can give me directions to amend it. So if I have a consensus of the board to add nineteen thousand dollars under the capital plan under police equipment, I'll do it.
I think we got one, one, two of us.
There shouldn't be an issue. We won't have to re-advertise because it's under the, the ten percent.
I'm good with not spending an extra twenty grand.
So what do we have?
Still consensus, it sounds like, but yes.
Well, during the course of the year, we, we still can make some expenditures and if we have the money, purchase this item, correct?
You can make adjustments to the budget by resolution, yes. After, after a certain date, I can't remember, April.
But I'm just saying, if we go into the next year and we want to purchase this item for nineteen thousand dollars, as long as we have the money available for us, we can do that, correct? Without making any adjustments to the budget?
Well, again, what's the consensus? Are we asking Mr. Lewis to amend the budget to include specifically a line item for this piece of equipment for nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars? I say yes?
John and I say yes. No, this is just for this one little piece about the signboard to include it or the speed, speed board. Okay, so we can add that in. Any other?
That will shut me up for the night. Thank you very much.
If that's all it took? Wow. I've done that a while ago.
I know the chief is going to come by and shake my hand someday, so.
Info we could have used a couple of years ago.
Any, any other direction? Ms. Snyder's is asking for a two mil increase. Is it, what's the consensus of the board on that?
I'm a no thank you on that one.
And I think, I think I like, I mean, it just, the, the manager's budget just seems to fit real well right now. To me, it was kind of a gift that we were able to maintain services, do a couple of things that we wanted to do and, and not raise taxes. So that's kind of my stance. I, I, I support and will support fire services.
Well, I have asked the residents through a survey and a lot of people obviously do not like to have taxes raised, but even so, even the ones who do not agree with this, they're suggesting maybe they'd be okay with like a one mil increase or a one and a half mil increase at this point. Would that be satisfactory, you think?
I knock a lot of doors and I always talk about fire services. Everybody supports, everybody that I've spoken to about it, citizens that live in our township, support our supporting fire services. It, without a doubt.
Well, there's no, there's no question about the support for fire services. The question is about raising taxes and how much to raise taxes and when to raise taxes. So I'm trying to say that, you know, what I've learned from talking to residents is that, you know, maybe two mils is a little bridge too far to go with this.
Then do you understand that next year, we're going to have to raise taxes three or four mil?
That's good. I won't be here next year.
I know, but I will be and I won't vote for that. So I'm just saying, that's.
There's also, I did a little bit of math and if we, if we wanted to reduce the ending fund balance percentage from fifteen to ten, that would, that would be, if I, if my math is correct, about almost nine hundred thousand dollars. Yes, it would still be at ten percent.
Well, if you do that, then you're going to have to do it every year. I don't see how you can do it once as a Band-Aid and not do it every year. So you're setting a precedent there.
But I, 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 I don't understand. You want to raise taxes two mils. We're almost going to take three mils and you're saying, what's the difference?
What do you mean?
Nine hundred thousand is almost three mils. So I mean, if we're, we're diverting that money and still maintaining a ten percent general fund, how is that going to affect next year any worse than you raising taxes and then we go and having a fifteen percent general fund, which is overloaded in my, my estimate, than us by using that money? That money is for us to use. That money is the residents' money for us to use. They don't want to know that we're hoarding fifteen percent when we could use some of that money to offset any kind of tax raise. So.
And I agree with that.
That, that was my suggestion last time. It was my suggestion a couple of years ago. If we have an inflated general fund, why not use that to offset any kind of tax increase?
Do we have an inflated general fund every year, would you say?
The general fund is, is determined by the board of supervisors. There is nothing set in stone that says it has to be ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent. We set that. If we want it to be zero, we could, we could bring the general fund down to zero, but it's our, it's our fund to take advantage of. And if we have it, if we have fifteen percent and then raise taxes two mils, what are the public, what's the public going to say then? We're, we're, we're keeping the mon, what are we, hoarding the money and then taxing them besides? I, I, I have to say, and I'll say it again, you want to, you want to, instead of raising taxes, take it from the general fund, which is in lieu of raising taxes, it would almost be doing the same thing, but you're, we're using money that is our money to use.
As long as it would be going towards hiring new firefighters, that's the whole point. That's the whole point. You can call it anything you want. If you take it from the general fund and put it in the firefighter fund, you can, you can say it's for whatever, but I'm asking for more firefighters. That's what I'm asking for. So if that money from the general fund is designated for more firefighters, then I would agree.
Mr. Manager, can it be designated for, for the fire fund?
It can be, the, the, yes, you can increase the transfer.
So, so by doing nine hundred thousand, we're just shy of actually three mils of which you wanted two mils. So we're actually in a better situation and still at a ten percent general fund.
And we could go anywhere in between ten and fifteen percent. I mean, if we wanted to do two mils.
I think, I think a couple of years ago, we went down to eight percent to compensate for any kind of tax raise. And I don't think, I think we did okay. I don't, I don't know because we compensate, we're going to have million dollar homes being built during the course of the year, which we're going to get some transfer tax. And also, people living in million dollar homes have to be making enough money to pay us some decent EIT. So I, I, I mean, I, I can't predict the future, but what I know is what we have now. And what we have now is we can offset a tax increase by taking money from the general fund and even more than the suggested two mils in tax increase. And nothing is affecting services, nothing is affecting the residents' pocketbook because they're not paying that extra tax annually.
I, I agree with Phil on that. I'd rather dip into our reserves than, than to raise taxes. And also, the, the economy's not doing great. You know, maybe we wait a year, maybe it's not so bad a year so that people aren't, you know, stressed out about having to pay more in taxes. So.
I could agree with that as long as, as I said, it was designated for the purpose that it's intended for, in my opinion.
Mr. Manager, what is the, I, one, one's the consensus of the board too, whether to go the whole five point eight six percent down to ten or if we wanted to go somewhere in the middle like two, two mils? What would two mils be? Like roughly seven hundred?
Six hundred and sixty thousand.
Six hundred and sixty.
But Mr. Chair, why would you even change that? I mean, your suggestion was pretty much ex, not excessive, but it's in addition to what was requested by Ms. Snyder and now you want to cut it back? Why are you afraid of the ten percent? The ten percent is, I've been on this board at times where it was down to five percent, down where we board at times where it was down to 5%, down where we only had $500,000. And, and you know what? Newtown Township is still here. So although we are stewards of the, the budget, I don't see anything wrong with it being at 10%. And I think your, your quoted amount was like $900,000.
Yeah, more, more precise, 894,265 was the math that I did. But I'm okay with that.
I'm fine, I'm fine with keeping the general fund at 10% and using that excess to go towards the, the fire fund, if that's, if that's the place it's going to go.
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to throw it, throw the option out there. So we throw it back.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying, but we're going to get into a paralysis by analysis unless we make, we make a decision here.
I'm good with that.
And I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with your original decision. I think that was a good decision to bring it down to 10% and use that money. It, it'll serve the purpose that was intended with, with Ms. Snyder's suggestion of a tax increase. So I, I think, I think it's a win-win all around.
I join you in, I join you in that. I think we've gotten Mr. Davis. And Mr. Mack's already said he's done for the night.
No, I'm, I'm okay with that. The only difficulty I see, it's not a long-term solution and it's not a long-term commitment. And I'm not quite sure how the residents would like to see it. I know we need to hire four more, a full-time paid firefighters to have this. Is it 24/7 if we have? Sorry?
No, it'd be 12.
Six to?
It would be 12 firefighters.
12 firefighters, which would cost a lot more than $900,000 a year.
You were just talking about paid firefighters on two extra days.
For two extra days? Well, what do we have now? Our two extra on the weekend.
Right, and volunteers.
No, it's, it's a full shift on the weekends.
A full shift on the weekends, I thought. So we have the weekends covered, but only until 6:00 PM.
6, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through, Monday through Sunday. And I mean, it's possible we could go like 6 to 10 in the evening or something, but whatever the, whatever the professionals.
That's all with their contract.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, whatever the professionals. I mean, we can't dictate to the professionals.
Well, we have other problem in terms of you trying to hire 12 and we know they're not going to fit into that firehouse. And so, you know, that's going to be another problem down the road, I think.
Well, good thing we have the borough, which is going to kick in some money as time goes on.
Yeah, they're not contributing enough as far as I'm concerned.
Absolutely, you're spot on. You're absolutely right.
You are correct. You are correct. Of course, they, they have told us they want to pay less. So.
Always. Well, hey, why not? Might as well give it a shot.
He'd like to pay less too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. I'm, I'm not saying that, I agree with them. I'm just saying what they say. All right, Mr. Manager, is that it?
So just so I have it clear, the direction is to add the $19,000 to the capital plan for the additional speed sign. And then further reduce. Right. And then further reduce the general fund down to the 10% and the remaining transfer will go to the fire fund. We're going to have to re-advertise that. So it won't be able to be adopted at the 26th meeting. So the, the first meeting, it'll be able to be adopted. First and last meeting for this year is the December 13th meeting.
Well, that's, is it 13th or something like that?
I think 11th, I'm sorry.
So explain how that re-advertising goes, 10 days?
It's 10 days, yes. And it's advertised in the paper.
So question, if we don't transfer it, do we have to re-advertise?
No.
I, I would suggest we don't transfer it.
I'm okay with waiting till December to.
But you got to get the newspaper to advertise it quicker.
I wish we didn't even have to advertise in the paper. I wish we could just advertise online. But rules are rules.
Okay. All right.
So, so that, are we still doing the transfer? Increasing the transfer?
Yes.
Okay.
I know you can't predict next year. And so I'm not even going to ask you to, but I just want everybody to keep in mind that this is a one-time deal and
Look at it again next year.
And it's going to be much more painful. Thank you.
Okay. Let me check my agenda. Are we on to old business? I guess it's new business next. No, I, I hear no, new business. Any need for an executive session?
Uh, no, there isn't, Mr. Chairman.
And so without a, without opposition, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you.